I have two short announcements before we start tonight's meeting. The first is that an executive session was held before tonight's meeting. HR. It was held in a public forum. It would violate our confidentiality rules. Okay, second announcement. So I assume we're set, we're going out to the public now?
Yes.
Okay. So I would like to first recognize the special circumstances that require this meeting to be held via teleconference. The coronavirus is challenging our community and our country in many ways. I urge all to adhere to safety guidelines and look out for your neighbors, friends, and family. We are stronger together. Thank you. Now I'm going to open the commissioners' meeting Wednesday, March 18th, 2020, and we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have a flag, Dan.
Good, okay. I'm going to start the pledge if everybody can join in. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance. United States of America and to the Republic of America. For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Joe. None of us messed that up. Okay, now if the manager could call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Brockington?
Here.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Norris?
Here.
Commissioner Pransky?
Here.
Commissioner Rappaport?
Here.
Commissioner Arman?
I'm here.
Commissioner Zegmanfeld?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting minutes dated February 19th, 2020. I'll take a motion to approve those minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number four, acceptance of the executive summary financial report of the manager's secretary for the month of February 2020. All those in favor for approving the executive summary financial report, say aye.
Aye.
And similarly, acceptance of the accounts paid report for February 2020. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, next, number six, Public Works Committee. I'm going to turn that over to Commissioner Mitch Zegmanfeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. We need to consider a number of items from Public Works Committee. The minute that the meeting was, March 4th. Item 6A is adoption of a resolution granting conditional approval of the CTDA 19-04 Land Development Lot Consolidation Plan for the Elkins Estate located at 1750 Ashburn Road, Elkins Park. I believe the lawyer from the developer is available in case there's any questions. Are there any questions? Or is there a need to make any additional information, Ms. Farrell?
Nothing from us, thank you.
Are there any?
Yeah, I have a question. This is Joe Bagley. Amy, did our, the township's traffic engineer respond to your traffic engineer?
No, we sent our letter and indicated that if he had any questions or comments or if anything was incorrect in Guy's summary, that he should let us know. We have not heard back from him, so we take that to mean that he's in agreement with our summary.
Do you know how much time he had to respond from your traffic engineer's letter?
I believe it went out last Wednesday or Thursday by electronic mail, so it's been almost a week.
All right, I think Commissioner Zegmanfeld, that is the only issue remaining. It is whether our traffic engineer is satisfied that their traffic engineer has responded or addressed all of the items in our traffic engineer's July 2019 letter.
So will there, Mr. Bagley, will there be a problem if we need to hold off approving or adopt? Question also goes to Mrs. Farrell as well.
Ms. Farrell provided a written extension of time until April 22. I assume that's still valid, correct, Amy?
Yes, that's correct. We're fine waiting if you want to give the traffic engineer additional time.
So I'm going to recommend, do I hear somebody else weighing in? I'm going to recommend that we table this for the, for the next earliest date, I guess it would be either the next Public Works Committee meeting or bringing it to the full board in April.
I, I agree with that recommendation.
Any, any discussion?
Any recorded question? All those in favor?
Aye. Okay, so that's tabled. I'm going to take some time with each of the remaining items on the agenda because staff, and if Bruce is available, I want to understand in this climate whether any significant or sizable financial commitments are going to be met. So I'm going to take these one at a time and try and get a feel for what we're doing. If we're doing bid authorizations, that's not a problem. As we start to look at some of these more sizable expenses, I think we have to be a little more prudent and a little more restrained. So 6B is an authorization to request bids for entranceway repairs at Ralph Morgan Park of Glen Side Avenue. Are there any issues, staff, associated with that, with that bid process?
No, the engineer has the plans designed and we are just requesting that we, at this point, solicit, get authorization and solicit for those bids for this project.
Do we have a dollar figure associated? Do we have a dollar figure associated with that?
Initially, we were saying if we could try to do the majority of this work in-house and, and I guess see if we could do it under the $21,400 public bid threshold. There was a little bit of work that we were able to do earlier this year, some tree work that was done and some moving of some of the earthwork. But when the engineer went back and took a look at it and tried to do the design for the staircase, there's a lot more structural work that needs to get done. So we're, he believes we're going to be above the bid threshold, but the number that I was hearing was somewhere between 21 and 40,000.
So here's my, go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner Rappaport.
Thank you. Is there any chance that because of its access to SEPTA and perhaps to a future, to the future transit area, that we can either get SEPTA or that proposal to chip in for this, what I consider an emergency repair?
I think if that's the direction of the board.
Right question, I was thinking the same thing. Any comment on that?
If that's the direction of the board, you can, we can make that request to SEPTA.
Any other comments along those lines?
It might be that in the meantime, we go ahead with trying to get a bid for it unless you think SEPTA could get a bid estimate for less than we could.
Now, I think since we designed the plan and it's under our engineer's seal, I think we would be the better entity to put out the bid. And then what we could do is we can loop SEPTA in on what we're doing, let them know what we're doing, and in the interim, while it's out to bid, we can have that conversation with them to see if they're willing to work with us for cost sharing.
I don't think there's a problem requesting the bid as long as we have the flexibility of taking that, both getting a competitive bid and at the same time moving it over to SEPTA to see if in fact, at the Winko Station or whatever, there's going to be an opportunity for them to pick up some of that cost. So I'll move that we authorize requesting bids for that and still at the same time running parallel track of working with SEPTA. Any other questions or comments? Called a question?
All those in favor of moving forward, just as Mitch discussed, will, will continue with the bid process. At the same time, we'll be pursuing SEPTA's assistance. All those in favor?
Aye. Good. Item 6C, authorization to request bids for tree pruning and planting work at Renninger Park. So again, staff, I'll ask the same question, you know, just on these things. And Brian, since you mentioned it, is this anything that we would be doing internally? Or this again is something that we need to go outside for?
Yes, we would need to go outside and request some bids for this. And actually, we've, we've kind of did get some feel just in some conversation. We're looking, you know, we did reach out to a couple of the, the, what was that? Yeah, through Co-Stars and a couple of other landscapers within the area. And the numbers are coming in around 20, to do both the tree removal and tree replacement is coming in a little bit around 21 over 21,000. So we feel comfortable that we really should put this out for, for the bid.
Okay. Any questions or comments, board?
Yeah, just a question. Brian, do we have clear guidance from DEP about this project and, and what it entails other than what was presented at the committee meeting? Because I think at the committee it was represented that this was spearheaded by DEP. And I was just wondering if we have specificity around that, that guidance from them?
Yes, part of the project design was, we did, we did reach out to DEP for some guidance. As a matter of fact, the actual plan was submitted to DEP for review. John Monroe was a subconsultant to our township engineer and submitted everything to Robert Graves from DEP. DEP wrote back and they're concerned with, well, they basically said we can proceed with doing the tree work. They were concerned with the small section of stream bank stabilization on the far side of the creek closer to Glen Side Hall. They wanted to make sure that we were anchoring the stone that we were moving out of the creek onto the bank. We would be making sure that that was somehow more permanently secure, that should we have a high weather of water event, that that stone wouldn't become loose again and, and those boulders wouldn't go back into the creek bed.
And is that, is that not something we can do internally?
That's something that we are looking to do internally, to see if we have the equipment. We may, according to, I think, Chris, we may have to rent a piece of equipment to reach on the far side of the creek and pull those boulders out of the creek bed. So we did put it in for the contractor to submit a quote and break that out separately. And we're also looking to see if we can do it ourselves.
Okay. Thank you.
So any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Sorry that I didn't include that in the last item. Then I'll move to question.
Okay, all those in favor of the bid, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. Item 6D, authorization to request bids for the Tocany Creek Trail Phase III Project, condition on acquisition of all necessary right of ways. Mr. Bagley, could you clarify that last, that last portion of the authorization in terms of right of ways?
Yes, there's, I'm aware of one property that we need to acquire right of way for, for the trail. It has, part of it is, partly involves the bridge over the Tocany that is going to be constructed. We've been in contact with the agent for that property owner, and the next thing we need to do, and we've given them notice of this, was to schedule a meeting with them. We haven't done that because we're not scheduling meetings at the Township Building or anywhere else during the coronavirus crisis. So that's the next step to take, and we'll take it as soon as it's, it's publicly healthy to do it.
And staff, what are the obligations that the township has in the Phase III Trail project, just in terms of the bids? How much of that is subsidized with grants and how much of that is on the township?
Well, the township, the grant is paying for, it's three different grant funding opportunities. There's $700,000, which is paying for the construction of the bridge and the approaches to the bridge. Then that's kind of the phase one, which is under discussion this evening. And then the second phase is actually completing the trail and the crossings at New Second Street, which are DVC and DCNR grant funded. In order, in order to proceed with this tap-funded project, we need to receive all the clearances right of way as one of them. Most of the other ones are, we are working on finalizing. But there is a, we need to complete the clearances by a certain date in order to obligate the $700,000 and, and meet PennDOT's requirements. Now, with the state shutting down, I don't know what that date is. We have a conference call scheduled next week, so we can find out how that's impacted, especially since we're not seeing the public to meet and discuss the right of way.
So what's, what's the net amount that the township at least, you know, at this point, would be obligated to pay?
We're currently funding, design costs are average, I think it's about $250,000, and then the construction inspection, which I believe is roughly 10%, but it's, we're trying to get it all funded through the other two grants. I don't have quite a number yet on that final budget, it's kind of the design process.
So in the request for bids, one of our hopes or expectations is that we're going to be significantly subsidized against the two, the design cost plus whatever our share of the construction cost will be? Or, you know, or, and/or do we have a hard number at a minimum that we're going to be on the hook for?
It's whatever number that the three grants do not cover. And I think our last estimate was somewhere about $100,000 for a one and a quarter million dollar trail project.
Well, going to bid in this case does not put us at risk of anything other than trying to maximize the funding and still move forward with it. Any other comments from the board?
I'll make a motion to.
Questions? Any questions or comments from the public? Go ahead, Dan, move forward.
I'll make a motion to, to approve the bid process, to go ahead with the bid process. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 6E, authorize staff to utilize a portion of the multimodal transportation fund grant to pay for the 2020 escalation costs as provided by Allen Myers, Inc. of Worcestershire, is that Worcestershire? Worcestershire, PA for the Elkins Park West Streetscape Improvement Project. So staff, first question is, what are our obligations? I'm sorry.
Chris, please mute your audio. Oops, sorry.
The obligation, this is a, the project that is currently under, well, not under construction today, but in progress. So with the delay over the winter, there's, and the new year turning over, there are some escalation costs, and that's what this is, this is asking for dollars toward. They're dollars not covered by the Transportation Alternatives Program grant. However, the multimodal transportation fund grant will cover those costs. So there's really no additional cost to the township. We've received permission from the multimodal grant agency that we can use that money to cover escalation costs.
So there's no additional expense to the township, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is Fred Milbert on the line to talk about the left turn lane off Old York Road to Church?
No, he's not.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board, the public? Called a question?
All, all those in favor of utilizing a portion of the, the grant to pay for the escalation costs, costs, say aye.
Aye. Aye. 6F, authorization to execute a personal agreement with Mr. Haver involving the relationship after his retirement on April 17, 2020, and certain transitional services provided for the next two years. Mr. Bagley, could you just catch us up on where that's at?
It was already recommended for approval by the Public Works Committee. The line item in the agenda pretty much sums it up. It's to assure the township that after Brian retires in April 17, that the township can access services with him, transitional services for either an interim manager or a permanent manager. And there's certain outstanding litigation that Brian is going to assist the township with, and it makes sure that that's going to happen and also addresses the relationship. Brian will part-time be in, on occasions, he will be providing transitional services, and on other occasions, he will be a witness, and he will not be able to be paid per hour when he's a witness.
And has that, that personnel agreement been executed by the township and by Mr. Haver?
No, it's just right, it's been executed by Mr. Haver, and we would need board approval tonight for it to be executed on behalf of the township.
Okay.
I.
Questions, questions from the board?
Go ahead.
I'm not hearing, does anybody have questions?
No.
Okay, hearing no questions, I, I so moved to authorize the execution of the personnel agreement as noted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You say all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye. All right, so those are the only items for Public Works. I moved it.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner Zegmanfeld, I just have a, a comment. Before you move to approve the recommendations and acceptance of the minutes, I have a modification to the minutes that was brought to our attention. In the Citizens Forum section of the minutes, there was some discussion of, of the comments made by Mr. Robert Hislop of Harrison Road. And to clarify those minutes, Mr. Hislop requested that Resolution 51-19 incorporate the final October 10th, 2019 Shade Tree Advisory Commission recommendation. That's what he asked for, and it's my recollection that the board instructed staff to review the pertinent documents to ensure that the resolution and all other accompanying documents are complied with. And that's not necessarily reflected.
Commissioner Arman, I believe that staff reviewed it and there was an acknowledgement by Township Manager Haver, is that correct, Mr. Haver?
That is correct, and, and I'm aware that the staff did change those yesterday and posted those online.
Okay, so in fact, so that's item 6G, so in fact, thank you, Commissioner Arman, so we in fact need to just agree to make those changes. And then with those changes, I'm, I'm going to recommend approval of the, the regular minutes from the Public Works Committee of, of March 4th, 2020.
All those in favor for approving them?
Excuse me, Earl Stam speaking. My understanding from reading the minutes is that Mr. Hislop was concerned that there were so many landscaping plans floating around. I think one of the big parts was something like three big willow trees. Are there going to be three big willow trees like the Shade Tree Commission asked for?
My recommend, or my recollection after that meeting was reviewing the resolution in question, and I believe the resolution addresses the fact that the Personnel Committee, I'm sorry, the Shade Tree Commission made a recommendation, but there was a plan that was approved by the Public Works Committee, and it references that plan, and I believe that was the plan that was approved. I think it's called X101 or something like that. And it references the Shade Tree Committee meeting, but it acknowledges in that resolution in the language that there were, there was an approval of a plan made by the Public Works Committee after the Shade Tree Commission meeting.
Well, Mr. Bagley, just, just to elaborate on that a little bit, I, I think, you know, the, the plan says what it says, the resolution says what it says, and, you know, will live up to whatever it says. I don't, I don't know that we need to sort of parse through it at this time, but it, it says whatever it says. So if it involves the planting of trees, then it involves the planting of trees. If it doesn't, then, then it doesn't. I think the document speaks for itself.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley. Thank you, Commissioner Arman. We've already talked about this in the, in the Public Works meeting, we weren't going to relitigate it. We agreed that we would live up to the obligations that we've committed to. So on that basis, Mr. Stam, we will do so, and there's no reason to continue the discussion. Let's go back and just, we, we've already approved it, so I'm going to now recommend approval of the regular minutes without any other additions.
Mr. Chairman, there is a motion.
In case we didn't already clearly do that.
Right, so there's a motion on the table to approve the minutes as, as, with the corrections noted.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye. All right, and that ends the Public Works thing. Thank you.
Okay, so this, let's see, this is Dan Norris again. I'm not sure who can see me and who can't see me. But just, I was, before I go on and bring on Commissioner Pransky for building and zoning, just a quick comment, particularly in light of the usual circumstances that this virus is causing. I wanted to thank Commissioner Pransky for helping with the Zoom meetings, and also thank Ken Hellen doll for his cooperation in getting us set up for, for this meeting. And the message to the public is the commissioners are committed to doing their best to have our meetings as open as possible and as accessible as possible. We certainly realize that there's no perfect answer during these trying times. So we will listen to any input. We're always trying to improve things, but for now, we're going to continue with the rest of the agenda here. And for the, at least foreseeable future, for the number of meetings, I can't say how many, whether we do it on Zoom or some other site, we will do our best to have our meetings as open to the public as possible. So with that interruption, I'll bring on Commissioner Pransky to discuss building and zoning.
Thank you, Mr. President. Building and zoning committee did meet on March 4th, and having gone through the minutes, we have no business that we need to bring in front of the commissioners at this point in time, so I would make a motion for approval of the minutes and we can move on with the meeting.
All those in favor of accepting the building and zoning meeting minutes for March 4th, say aye.
Aye.
One, one note to what you said before, Mr. Norris, we are going to be looking at several platforms, and the only thing the public needs to be aware of at this point is that they will get noticed, they will get either email notice or on the websites, and it will contain the necessary links or information to be able to join the meeting.
Excellent point. The, the public should certainly be looking out for our website, our TV notices, emails are going out that will have instructions as far as signing on to future meetings. So next on the agenda is Public Safety Committee, and on March 11th, Commissioner Brockington is going to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, on March 11th, Public Safety did meet, and we have two items. Item A, authorize the advertisement of the Board of Commissioners intend to consider the. the adoption of the ordinance amending Chapter 285 Vehicle and Traffic, Section 285-43, Street Parking Regulations of Sheltonham Township Code to amend the traffic regulation to remove the handicap parking in front of 7316 Butcher Street and replace, and to replace the 35 mile per hour street limit, and his regular scheduled meeting on a limit on Greenwood Avenue from Lime Hill Pike to Hezbro Lane with a 25 mile an hour speed limit, at his regular scheduled meeting on April 22, 2020, I call the question.
All those in favor of authorizing the advertisements, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and item B, and item B, authorize township staff to enter into a leasing agreement with Lindy Wingcoat PP, granting permission to the Sheltonham Township Police Department to install, operate, and maintain a rooftop communication antenna on top of the building, too, at Wingcoat Towers at a rate of $1 per year, I call the question.
I just have one question. I'm sorry, Chairman Brockington. Mr. Haver, has that, and Mr. Bagley perhaps, has that agreement been modified to set forth an annual renewal?
Annual renewal.
Concern?
Yes, we spoke with, Joe's aware of this, we spoke with the owner of the property, and it will renew on a month-to-month after the first year is over, it'll renew on a month-to-month at no additional cost.
Is there a reason why it's month-to-month as opposed to annually?
The owner was not comfortable with doing annual, he said, let's just do it month-to-month at no cost.
He may want to negotiate the rate down.
Okay.
There was language added today when Brian brought that Public Safety Committee recommendation my attention, so I added language that indicated that the only rental that would be paid would be for the first year, it would be month-to-month for anything after the first year, and that that would be no additional consideration paid by the township.
And, Mr. Bagley, you're comfortable with that type of arrangement?
Yes, and I just want to correct, the line item on the agenda says a dollar per year. My recollection is it actually says a dollar per month for the first year, and I added the language today that says no additional rental payments after the first year.
So, we need to make this correction. He's going month-to-month next year, but at no charge?
Correct, month-to-month for the second year and onward.
So no?
No cost.
So in other words, where most of these agreements are a dollar a year, he's negotiated 12 years upfront and then won't charge us month-to-month after that?
No, he's negotiated $12.
That's what I said.
No rental after that.
That's what I said, the equivalent of 12 years upfront and no rent, okay.
Yes.
So we're gonna change that to what Joe said, and I call that the question.
All those.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yes, all those in favor of authorizing the township to enter to the lease agreement at? Aye.
Aye.
And I will call, consider for their approval or recommendation of all the Public Safety Committee meetings, minutes, which happened on March 11, 2020.
All those in favor of accepting the meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
And that's it for Public Safety.
Okay, moving ahead to number nine on our agenda, that's the Public Affairs Committee met on March 11, and Commissioner Rappaport is going to discuss that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, let me just take a second to thank staff, the public, and also all my colleagues here for all the extra efforts and composure under the additional strain from the health emergency, so thank you all. There are a number of items from the March 11 Public Affairs Committee, starting with the adoption of a resolution admitting to a minimum matching contribution of $278,125, and authorizing the staff to submit an application and execute any required documentation for a Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund Keystone Grant for public libraries to replace the Elkins Park Free Library Roof, and the committee recommended that. I do have a question before asking for vote on that, and then we can open it up to further discussion. Rather than committing to a minimum matching contribution of that amount, could we, could we say simply a matching contribution rather than coming up with that strange number?
Well, the grant is a 50/50 match, so you would have to match it with at least whatever cost it is, 50% of whatever the cost, and it's no guarantee that the cost that's estimated today is what will be realized when we actually go to construction on the project, so if there's any cost overruns, the state grant is fixed, our contribution is higher, but if it's lower than what was estimated, then the, then it would be kind of, you know, I guess it's a sliding scale, but yeah, so we could change the language a little bit, but it's just committing to cover whatever, even if the cost goes more, we're committing to that, whether it's the township or the library, whoever, outside of the funding agency will have to commit those additional costs.
Um, I guess my hope was that it was going to, you know, that perhaps, we had talked about that seeming like a huge amount, and so the question was, could it possibly be, could we get the work for less, and then for us to have committed to a minimum of that seems counterproductive. So, um, I understand that it's a 50/50 commitment, but I think we're nailing ourselves to something that might be unnecessarily high, especially if we go into a recession or something like that.
So as a follow-up to Commissioner Rappaport's question, if, if we obtain the grant for $278, and then we match that $278, do all of those funds have to be used on that specific project, or if the cost on that project is much less than we anticipated, can those grant funds and the match funds be used on another project roofing or otherwise?
Generally, the scope of what we apply for is what is funded through that grant. Sometimes if there is additional funding, it would depend on whether or not if it's within the requirements of the grant, if we can apply them somewhere else.
Excuse me for adding, but there was a provision in that, I thought, that also said that it, the capital, that the money had to go for a capital project that was the extension of, the lifetime of the library or, or the roof itself, or something like that, which to me also confined it to that library.
Yes, it would be attached to that library.
The wording was very specific. So I'm asking if we can go forward?
Chairperson? Can I have a question? Can you hear me?
Now I can.
Man?
He's got you now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Last week in the meeting, I raised the following question or concern. I think, and now it's even more, I think, more of an issue, there's certain fiscal uncertainties that we're gonna be facing and we're currently facing, and we're really unclear about what they're gonna be. I raised the question last week, before we authorize a commitment of that nature, I think we need to go to the library board and talk to them about allocating some percentage, if not a significant percentage of their fund balance, to provide additional funding for that. I think it's a significant expense at a time when we have some, some questions and challenges in position, I understand, you need to apply it for a grant and that kind of thing, it's been raised that the grant requests or whatever, the timetables on those might be delayed, so that'll give us a little more leeway, but I still think we need to go to the library board and, and request a significant amount of that, of what contribution they can make in order to provide some funding against that $278,000. I am very uncomfortable at this point that a $560,000 investment in the Elkins Park Library Building is an essential spend, even if half of it is covered with a grant.
Commissioners, Commissioner Ziegmanfeld and Commissioner Rappaport raise a good point, and I think we could still go to the library board and talk to them about what their contribution can be, outside of the filing of this grant application, Commonwealth Funding Agency, they don't, I don't think, they're looking to get into those kind of details of how the township's gonna make up its matching contribution, they just want to know that we're committed to do it. If we have other players that are gonna come to the table behind the scenes to help with that cost sharing, that discussion really is on us, the state for purposes of filing and getting this resolution authorized tonight, we don't, they don't need to know those details, and they don't want to know those details.
Yeah, and the grant application, as far as we know, is due April 10, so I don't know that we have the time or the luxury to hold off until we have library board approval to match it. My suggestion would be to approve the resolution, authorize the grant, try to work this out, and hopefully have it established who's gonna pay what by the time the grant award is made, and we can go forward with that.
I have two other questions about it. One is, is the library board actually going to meet next week as scheduled in some format? Or do we know?
As liaison to the library board, that has not yet been determined.
Okay. And then my other question is, say we went ahead and authorized it, we got the grant, and we became, we found that we were unable to meet somehow our obligation, could we return the grant?
The answer to that is yes, we can return that grant, we don't have to sign the grant agreement.
There's no penalty?
No.
Well, I still, I still have the opinion that at a time where there's these kinds of fiscal uncertainties, we don't know what we're facing, even if we can return the grant, making a commitment approximately $280,000 for a capital expenditure on a library roof, I believe that, you know, even though there may be contentions of the contrary, I'm sure that there is ability to do some costly repairs, say to the tune of $100,000, or a number that would be more palatable, and still get share from the, from the library board fund balance, and not have a line item that we've committed to at a time when we have these kinds of fiscal uncertainty, so I'm uncomfortable making a commitment of that nature at this point with so many things that we're not clear on.
Is there any other board discussion on this? Is there any? I think, yeah, go ahead.
All the points that have been brought up are valid on their, on the right. Brian?
Yeah.
Do we have any ability to modify the grant, even in advance of it being due? Because if we need to, and, you know, explain to the state, look, given what's been going on, we can't meet a 200 and whatever thousand dollar commitment, but we could certainly, let's say, meet $100,000, would they still kick in the 100? Is there a way to deal with that if it comes up?
Good question.
The answer to that is yes.
Well, isn't that what I was saying about just saying we want, we are willing to commit to a matching grant, and then we still need to bid it as we wish, you know, or rebid it, we don't necessarily have to take that estimate as, as the, as the project.
Well, we, I think we need to, in order to show that we're sincere, we need to have something in writing from a design consultant saying what the cost for replacement of that roof is, and that's basically what we have. We have it, we hired our consultant, a consultant went out, met with a number of roofers, met with construction estimators, and they did whittle that number down just a little bit from where we were a year ago, but in order to replace the roof, that's, and to meet the energy issues that we brought to their attention, we were trying to achieve, because I think they built in a certain amount of energy insulation as part of this roof program, that's why the numbers are as high as it is. We could obviously go back and take a look and whittle that scope down somewhat, but the grant's there to pay for roof replacement, not roof repairs, so we gotta make sure when we're writing the grant, making our case, making our argument to the state, it's replacement, not repairs, they don't fund maintenance.
So on behalf of the committee, I think what we're saying is, we're not comfortable going with that amount, we might, we would be possibly willing, and I think that the, the vote of the group was to go with a matching grant, but not necessarily at this, certainly not as a minimum of this number, but, but yes, I think we committed to try to replace the roof using a matching grant. And that's what I would move, yeah, go ahead.
I think, if I'm understanding correctly, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, that he stated that if necessary, we can ask to diminish the amount of the grant, which gives us all the coverage we need as far as that, if things turn out to be too much. I think because of the requirements of the grant, and this is kind of standard, they're only gonna commit to matching funds for the amount we have submitted, and we have, we have nothing to lose by committing for that, we have the ability to back away from it or to diminish it, so I think, I don't think we're being hurt by saying, yes, let's submit this, and Brian, if I misstated anything?
It says minimum matching.
And to speak to Ann's point, we can tweak that language and take out minimum matching, and kind of say we commit to fund 50% of the total project cost, end of the day.
Right, and that, that is the motion I would ask to go forward with.
I would support that motion.
Yeah, so would I. I, I just wanted to add one other comment, because obviously, we are all concerned with the large dollar amount, and Mitch, I share your, your concerns about committing to such a large amount, so in the, I understand that in the grant application, we cannot put any stipulation as to where our matching contribution is coming from, however, I'd like it to be put in our notes for tonight, our meeting notes, so that we are on record that the commissioners are going to be looking towards the Township Library Board, and I'll state right now for a significant contribution of their funds towards this roof repair.
And in addition to that, Mr. President, we also talked about, you know, walking back the scope of work and maybe rethinking the, the energy efficiency goals that we were trying to accomplish, which would also accomplish significant savings in conjunction with the contribution from the library board.
Good, thank you, that should be, that should also be clear in the notes, so that if we're looking back at this, we didn't agree to necessarily the top price for repairing this roof, just the opposite, there's the intention that we're, whether it's the energy portion or any other portion that we are able to carve out, we may or may not do the roof repair at a, at a lesser price.
That should also, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask for a clarification, are we going to amend the authorization, or we're gonna leave the authorization intact with the, with the matching minimum edited, but we'll still be committing to some sizable expense? And then? A- and then we're, in our notes, we have caveated, uh, both, uh, you know, a reduction, a step back to what Commissioner Holland said, and to your point, Dan, that we would, uh, we would try, you know, try and, and find funds from the library board. I guess my concern is that the authorization, to me, is a quasi-commitment by the board. So I'm still uncomfortable knowing what that number is.
Let me add one more, one more, um, thing for you to consider with this dollar amount. When we apply for grants, we try to come up with as many contingencies as possible, so that when we apply for the grant, we get as much money to apply toward the project. So if it comes in, and we, we do our bid and it comes in under budget, that's great. We can take less grant money. But I'd rather have more grant money to apply toward the project, so if the costs come in higher, we're, we're covered. So we will do our best. I, I think if it's okay with you guys, I'd like to apply for the grant with this dollar amount as the request, and if we can pare it down, um, and hopefully bids come in lower, we're, we work out, kind of ahead of the game.
Yeah. Allison, it's always easier to give money back to the state than to ask them for more afterwards.
Absolutely, yes.
One last, one last point, if I could. Um, the library board should also be made aware that if they find it not feasible to contribute, uh, financially to the project, and we have to cut back the insulation or other things that we're planning to do in the roof, that is going to have an impact on their utility bills, which will leave them less funds for other things.
Um, well, we may do that anyway, though. We may do that from a, from a, uh, cost management, uh, perspective, so that, that'll be an open ques-
Again, going, going back to the minimum, um, since we're submitting the bids as we ha- or the estimates, whatever you want to call them, that we already have, that implies what our match would be, um, I still object to saying we're committing that, to that number as a minimum matching. I, I say, we're submitting, we're submitting, what?
Allison said she was gonna remove the word minimum.
Uh, but then I think she said, we have to put it, I, I thought, I heard her walk that back and say the opposite.
No, no, um, I would say the resolution would say we would commit to provide a 50% match.
Right, okay.
Actually in the resolution, but, um, I would say that I'm going to be asking for that 278, 125 number.
Right, because those are the numbers we're submitting.
Right.
Correct.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I think we're agreed. Uh, maybe it's time to call the question?
Yes. Go ahead, call the question.
All right, all in favor? I was waiting for you to.
Oh, okay. The question is to commit to a, uh, matching contribution, as, as we've discussed, with the footnotes in our meeting minutes, also as discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to B. Um, the committee, uh, voted to table, uh, the discussion with Verizon contract, uh, until our next Public Works Committee meeting, and I so move on behalf of the committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Item C for Public Affairs, approval to take the following actions to cancel or postpone the following special events due to the concerns of the COVID-19 outbreak. First, to postpone the Elkins Park Middle School 5K run on April 19th, uh, to a future date possibly in the fall. I so move.
All those in-
Aye.
Aye.
Second, to reevaluate in this early summer, the Cheltenham High School Lady Panthers 5K run, uh, so, scheduled right now for September 26th, and I so move.
All in favor?
Aye.
The committee also, um, moved for the, uh, approval of the cancellation of, of the following list of six items, uh, again, due to the COVID-19 outbreak, uh, the March 28th Easter egg hunt at Curtis Arboretum, the April 18th Princess Ball at Glenside Hall, the April 18th Flea Market at Curtis Arboretum, the April 18th, excuse me, Trail Fest on Tucany Creek Parkway, the April 24th Arbor Day Celebration at Carroll Brook Park, and the Earth Day Events at the various locations through April. And on behalf of the committee, I so move, all in favor?
Aye.
And of course, that's with regret. Um, I do have a, um, correction to the minutes from the meeting. Um, somewhere in there, it said, uh, that I had recommended, that I had said that there would be, there should be, uh, a revision of the Verizon contract, because I objected to, um, the 24-hour notice, uh, correction, uh, response time to, uh, customers. It, no, I, I don't object to a 24-hour, it was the 72-hour correction, um, that I felt was too long. So I, um, that was what I had said, and I want the minutes to reflect it accurately, please.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, do we know if Jeffrey Miller has canceled any of his events at Curtis through the months of March and April?
I, I can fill, um, fill you in a little bit. I, I do know that, uh, the first event in April 25th, and I think the first few in May are canceling. He has a, a policy where, um, he's giving his clients the opportunity to postpone events, um, till later in the year or into 2021. I believe some of them are weekday. Um, so he's worked, trying to work with his clients to make sure that they get what they need.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so now I'll call for, if there are no other, uh, corrections, I'll call for the adoption of the, uh, amended, or corrected, um, meeting minutes to the March 11th Public Affairs Committee. All in favor?
All aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Rappaport. Uh, the Finance Committee met on March 11th, and Commissioner Holland is going to tell us about that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee did meet on March 11th. We have two items requiring board action. Uh, before we go there, I just wanted to, uh, inform the public that we are working with our outside advisors, uh, on reviewing things like pension funds. Uh, we're working with our, our, uh, finance officer and tax collector to try to quantify the impact that the, uh, that the virus will have on, uh, on our budget, uh, both from a revenue and an expense standpoint. So, uh, we are actively working on, on that, and although we don't, uh, we, we haven't been able to quantify what that impact will be, um, there's lots of discussions going on around those items. So stay tuned for, uh, for future updates. Uh, so item A, uh, authorization of the township solicitor to prepare a tax abatement agreement for municipal taxes for DOMAS construction, a new business to the township located at 101 Limekill and Pike in Glen Side. Uh, we had a robust discussion about this, uh, and I so move.
Can I ask the question?
Yes, questions?
Um, I, I'm very much in favor of this, but what I don't understand is, about a year ago, when we started amending the, uh, the LERTA, the tax abatement, I asked very explicitly if we could do a separate arrangement for DOMAS based on, um, the, the problem that came up with the expired one, and I was told no. What I don't understand is why now we can do it, and why we wasted a year, uh, doing, you know, postponing that.
Mr. Manager or Mr. Solicitor?
Yeah, I haven't been involved in the discussions at all with DOMAS, so not a year ago and not recently, so I think I'm gonna have to defer to Mr. Haver.
Um, I don't recall having made that statement that we couldn't enter into an agreement. I don't remember that.
I, I think part of the issue, if I can interject, is that the LERTA involves us, the county and the school district, and in any modification, we'd have to involve all three entities, so even if we made an agreement, it would only affect one port, one part of the total tax issue, and, and the purpose of the LERTA is to cover the three entities. So, while I, I don't disagree with what you're asking, Commissioner Rappaport, I don't think it would serve much of a purpose to have had a, a secondary agreement that was, that didn't include all three entities.
Well, does this, this doesn't, right? This is just you, no, the one, the one we're agreeing to tonight simply is, as I understand it, is simply our municipal taxes. It doesn't involve those others. So why didn't we do that a year ago? We could have saved them.
Tonight, we're considering just the municipal tax. We have not discussed anything with the school district or the county.
Right, I understand.
So I think, I think, Ann, to your point, maybe there was a year ago some confusion around, we were talking about something that involved multiple taxing entities or just us, um, but I think now we know going forward that, um, you know, that we do have the ability to, to, um, you know, get into a, a tax abatement agreement, but, you know, we want to get something more formal in place, uh, moving forward.
Of course, and we, we have been working on that. Um, I just, there, there's a sense, I feel a sense of, we could have done this, if somebody had been listening, it, this was an easy problem to solve, uh, but we said no. Our automatic react, reaction is no to just about every creative problem, uh, that we're, uh, sometimes trying to solve. So I just, I, I would appreciate a little more, uh, flexibility, uh, when, when suggestions come up along the way, that, uh, we don't just automatically say no. Anyway, I, I support this, and why don't we move on?
Well, thank, thank you for that, and it is so noted that you look for, uh, more open-mindedness and, uh, creative solutions, um, early on when problems arise. Uh, so the motion's on the floor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ayes.
All right. Uh, item B related to A, authorize the advertisement of the Board of Commissioners' intention to consider the adoption of an ordinance repealing Chapter 270 taxation, uh, article V1-6. Is that six? V1?
You got it.
Property tax abatement's also known, uh, as 270-77 through 270-84 of the Cheltenham Township Code of Ordinance, and it's entirely at its regularly scheduled meeting on April 22nd, the full board meeting, and I so move.
Any discussion-
This is Earl Stam, is that, uh?
Earl? Oh, you muted your audio, Earl.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that the one dealing with the tax abatement if you improve a property?
Yes.
Okay, uh, okay, that, that's important. Uh, I really am strongly against it. I'm not gonna tell you why now, but I hope that it's advertised, because I don't think we're gonna have a live meeting on that day.
Just to repeal.
Yeah, for the record, it's to repeal. Yeah, it's to repeal.
Yeah, we're, we're repealing-
This is one that's already obsolete. It's already expired.
Oh, the one that's obsolete, that, that's never went into effect.
This is expired.
Okay.
Right, and there, there'll be robust discussion on, on any new ordinances involving this moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so motions on the floor?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, no additional business, uh, for the Finance Committee on March 11th, so I would move for the acceptance of the meeting minutes.
All those in favor of accepting the Finance Committee meeting minutes, March 11th, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Holland. Uh, number 11, we're up to old business. Any commissioners have any old business? Anyone from the public have any old business?
Somebody did have some old business.
Yeah, but I don't hear anybody. Did F- did we all mute the, mute our buttons so that we can't hear them?
No, no, nobody's looking to speak up from what I can see.
Hi.
Ah, hi, Rhonda.
Um, are we onto new business?
No, almost.
Old, old business.
I'm sorry, I, I popped in too quick, I apologize.
No, no problem, you're, you're up right next. Hearing no old business, we're gonna move to new business. Ron?
I, I actually have some, I have some new business.
Okay, Matt, we'll let you go first.
That, thank you. Um, uh, two, two items. The, the first is that, um, in addition to the list that Commissioner Rappaport, um, identified as canceled events, um, sad to report that, uh, the Glen Side Arts Festival will similarly be canceled, that announcement was made in the last day or so. Um, on a, on a more, uh, on another note, um, perhaps more serious, as many of you are aware, um, there was a homicide this past Sunday evening around 9:00 PM in Glen Side, on West Glen Side Avenue, near what, on West Glen Side Avenue near Clayton. Uh, and first, I would like to commend the Cheltenham Township Police Department, Chief Frye and the Montgomery County Detectives Unit for their thorough and swift, uh, investigation, which led to the prompt arrest of a suspect. So, uh, thank you to the Police Department for that, and Chief Frye. Um, that stated, it appears that the events, uh, that resulted in, um, a shooting and ultimately, uh, a victim's death began in an abandoned property, which was possibly being used for questionable, if not illegal, activities. Um, so the prospect of having abandoned properties, um, in Glen Side or the township at large that are being used by those up to no good, um, troubles me, as I'm sure it troubles many of you, uh, and for that reason, I'm requesting that township staff coordinate, uh, with the Cheltenham Township Police Department to remain vigilant in identifying abandoned parcels, ensuring that they're secured and maintained and otherwise code compliant, uh, and that they're monitored, uh, by Cheltenham Township Police Department, uh, to avoid, uh, experiencing, so we could avoid experiencing what the residents in Glen Side experienced last Sunday night. So, um, I, I would ask that township staff, um, continue to coordinate to identify these properties, to ensure they're secured, uh, and Mr. Township Manager, if you could just keep me updated, um, on, uh, how that is progressing as we move forward, I certainly would appreciate it, and, and the entire board, actually.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you.
And just, just a reminder, we, we do have, uh, an abandoned property ordinance that we worked hard to get, and so it's just a matter of complying, you know, identifying them and complying with those provisions.
And to, to that point, Commissioner Rappaport-
Matt, I'm gonna interrupt you for one second. Uh, Dan, your mic is open, so we're pick- there you go, thank you. Go ahead.
Um, what I would do is encourage residents, uh, if they are aware of an abandoned property that is, um, either just simply abandoned, or abandoned and being, um, used in an improper manner, to, um, alert the police, alert their commissioner, and, um, uh, and just keep an eye out. So, thank you for that.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Armond. Armond.
Thank you for that, Dan.
Thank you for thanking you.
Uh, there, uh, Rhonda, if you're there, but there are a couple of new business-
I am here, I am here, I'm always at your meetings. Hey, I, um, a couple of things I wanna, um, say first. I wanna thank, um, I've been asked to thank staff, uh, for showing up for work and keeping the township going, um, and a, and a special thanks, not to single any department out, but these two are most noted, and that's Public Works and, um, Ken's Department Emergency Services for keeping us going during, um, COVID-19. Um, and here is a, a question that I've, I received, but we've expanded the Cheltenham Infrastructure page- Page to cover the COVID situation because it was said that people are infrastructure. So I got several messages today about kids playing, you know, basketball in parks, et cetera, and appreciating that that's, you know, really difficult, the kids are all home, and what are you going to do with them? But there's concern why those parks are still open, and there's the, you know, the lack of social distancing there. So I'm not sure if that's a public safety or a parks issue, but there's some concern in the community about why those are still open.
I know there's been a lot of changing regulations from the state and the county about parks and public facilities. I don't know what today's latest was.
Today's latest, because, and just for everybody's information, we're streaming all, the Moncos I find to be the most informationalist, I can't even speak, for the township, but it's my understanding that all parks, and from the governor's pressers, which I stream also, that all parks are to be closed.
Could I speak to that for a moment?
Sure, please.
We discussed that at staff today, and even though there are some parks that are closed, there are some that are open, and closing a park is not a realistic thing. We came up with a sign that will be posted at all the playgrounds, advising people about social distancing, and also that we are not cleaning the playground equipment, and it's used at their own risk, and that we are, you know, recommending that they use caution. There is also a consideration for the children, and we did have a good discussion today, there is nothing else left for them to do. Libraries are closed, the communities are closed, and if this goes on as long as we think it will, kids with nothing to do get in trouble. So we, is our hope that by posting the signs, you know, we felt that was a better option than closing. We did talk to Abington. Off the record, they have closed their parks, and it's not working very well.
No. Just, just for the boards, because I'm sure you're too busy to watch, and we're trying to be really informational and accurate, what we're trying to do on the Parents of Cheltenham page and the infrastructure page is give suggestions on how to keep people active and give them activities to get through this. So we're, I'm appreciative, this has got, this has got to be awful for parents, because what are you going to do? And according to the Monco, and I don't know how many of you are on it today, but the Monco presser today was assume you have it. I mean, just assume you have it, and then make sure, and try to not spread it. So that's, that seems to be the best advice from everything I've read. I'm sure you can appreciate how much I've read, is if you presume you have it and take those precautions not to give it to somebody else, that seems to be the best, but there, there's this concern when everybody, when there are some trying so hard to social distance, seeing kids in the park. So thank you for answering me, and, but I had to ask, so.
Well, just, just as a, just as a side note, I'm on the Montgomery County site, and although the parks and historic sites are closed, the trails remain open.
Yes, I did post that. The governor posted that all the state parks are open, but that staff was limited, and they were, they were asking that social distancing have, you know, be observed while walking through the park, so.
Also, if I could just add, family groups might be using the basketball or the tennis court. So you could have the same members of the family who are just sharing their own personal equipment and among themselves. So it, you know, we don't want to assume that just because we see a couple of kids playing basketball, that they haven't already been from the same household.
Yeah, I mean, you could have four boys or five boys and cousins. Yeah, I mean, I grew up like that.
Yeah, and that's, so.
I mean, I grew up like that, where we had, when one of us had the measles, all 30 of us had, my cousins and I had the measles, because my grandmother lived next door. So that's very possible, but it's, I still promise to address it with y'all, because it's, it's a public safety issue, so I will pass.
Hey, Anne, a rhetorical question, has this had an adverse impact on pickleball?
Like, I would know that. I would know that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't resist.
Inquiring minds must know.
Oh, oh, by the way, by the way, we were asked, I was, we were asked, and I put a poll out, we have a thread going on starting tomorrow about where to find groceries, and oh, God help us, toilet paper. On the infrastructure page, I know. No, please, let's just not comment anymore after that.
Actually, you can find toilet paper at Hare Town in the Greenwood.
I heard, I heard 99 cents a roll, I was limited to five, yes, in the mall. In the mall, yes.
Rhonda, thank you for your comments, and, and certainly you, and we understand, and you do, this is a changing situation, and the input is appreciated, but we're doing our best, and our staff is doing our best.
Oh, no, of course, of course, but this is, this is an, you know, this is an official thing, and I couldn't comment on it because I'm not official, so I wanted to just ask on behalf of people who asked me, so.
Yeah, thank you.
And please, if any of you, if you see a problem with something posted, if you'll please reach out to me so we can address it. But we're just trying to, you know, as always, and by the way, I do miss sewer system posts, because those were so much easier. Just saying, please let me know, though, because I, the, the point, the intent is not to circumvent the, the BOC or the township, it's just to help keep people informed on what's going on, so.
And I also want to add my thanks to, to all of our staff who are putting in extraordinary efforts and adjusting their work schedules and their efforts, but they all remain committed to serving our residents. Thank them for that. Another item on new business, it's on the agenda, 12A. There were a couple of citizen committee appointments. I'm going to look to Township Manager Brian Haver for assistance here. I don't remember, I remember receiving them, but I don't have them in front of me.
Yes, we have for your consideration Denise, and I don't want to botch her name, R-O-L-F-E? Rolfe, 159 Greenwood Avenue, Windcoat, to fill a voting position on the Traffic Calming Committee for Ward Four.
Was that the only?
That's the only one, yes.
Okay, then, that's my, I'm looking for the commissioner's consent and approval to make that appointment. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Next new business item is an adoption of an emergency ordinance pursuant to Section 505 of the Cheltenham Township Home Rule Charter, which waives the requirements for competitive bidding and including an official emergency declaration, authorize township public meetings by way of electronic communications, instead of being held in public buildings, and addressing the handling of right-to-know law requests due to potential delays in the township's ability to respond as a result of the current health emergency. Any comments or questions on that?
Earl Stam, could you elaborate a little bit about what you're talking about?
Yeah, this is an emergency ordinance that's authorized under the Cheltenham Township Home Rule Charter. It was drafted last Friday by me. It was using the information that was available, the news that was available on Friday. Some of that, actually, I think what is quoted is actually still all applicable. There's just been more news since it was first drafted.
Let me have one more, I'm probably going to crash in a little bit.
Mic's open.
Since that time, I think what I would do is, I would amend this ordinance where it references on Page 2, Section 505 of the Cheltenham Township Home Rule Charter, I would add, and the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code. Since then, I've read references to that code, and I believe it provides probably a little bit more flexibility than even the Cheltenham Township Home Rule Charter, which was drafted 1976. Since then, I would also delete any references, because I don't know that it's in the ordinance itself. I heard it in the description. This is not intended to replace public meetings in public buildings. It is to authorize conducting meetings via teleconference, webinar, or other electronic method, which allows for two-way communication. It's the intention, since it's happening right now, that the township manager or assistant township manager would be present in Curtis Hall, where the meeting is advertised, with the ability of a member of the public to access the teleconference if they wanted to, but certainly at the same time to discourage the public unless it's the only means for them to access the meeting, for coming to the Curtis Hall. The one vulnerability of eliminating that, what I'll call that foothold in Curtis Hall, is if we go and eliminate it, I think we may be susceptible to a challenge under the Americans with Disabilities Act, because there are some people who, disabled, who would not be able to access this, either from whatever their disability is. And there have been a lot of, as I think we may have even mentioned, ADA-derived lawsuits filed against township websites, which are increasingly happening. And in order to survive one of those challenges, I think it's important that we keep the, the system that we have in place for this first teleconference or webinar with someone present and in Curtis Hall, and a member of the public able to access through Curtis Hall. I did have another change to this draft ordinance. Commissioner Rappaport pointed out a spelling error on United States Centers for Disease Control, I've corrected that. And other than that, I don't know if there's any other comments to it.
Yeah, I had also asked about the competitive bidding, because my question really is, is it an all or nothing, or is there some way to relax the competitive bidding and still have some oversight over?
Could I speak to that?
Over authorizing the funds for purchases.
Commissioner, if I could, two things, we would be the 41st community in the county to declare an emergency.
I think counting.
In the county, yes.
I've been counting, I, it's been growing.
Right.
Quite, quite lengthy, yes.
We, we've done this before during snow emergencies and stuff, and I made it very clear at the staff meeting today, knowing that this was coming up, that this does not go, mean we can just go out and buy anything. And the way we have always envisioned this, when it has happened in the past, it is only for emergencies. And when I say emergencies, we're talking masks and, and things that we need to combat. The other thing is the ability to have overtime, and we are keeping very careful track of every dime we're spending on this in hopes of getting it back, but the, the, I think we need that ability, I mean, yeah.
Well, it's just that that's not what the ordinance says, or the declaration says. It says waiving the requirements for competitive bidding, it doesn't say for emergency equipment.
I think in the past, that, that.
The past, I think, is not relevant here. What we're talking about is a, an emergency declaration that's going forward, possibly for months, and I think it makes sense to, to go ahead and authorize that, but there needs to be some piece of it that is much more to, yes, to those emergency needs, but also that just has some kind of reporting requirement, or some advance, or some simultaneity to the, to it, so that the board or, or the management do, and/or both, get, have an ongoing account of what's going on and what those purchases are. I don't think you can wait, it, it's not an all-or-nothing thing, it has to do with how you word it, so that you don't hamstring your emergency operations at all, but that we are not just irresponsibly letting our, opening our books to all kinds of waiving the, as I say, waiving the requirements for competitive bidding, and that was what I was asking, oh, I mean, over the weekend, I saw.
The ordinance can be amended to add, I mean, at this time, to add a not-to-exceed amount per contract, or it could do it, but in the aggregate for all contracts authorized under the ordinance.
But why couldn't we say along the lines of what Commissioner Rappaport said, and what Mr. Halandal said, which is for emergency purposes, and then ultimately put in there that such expenditures will be, will be, you know, accounted and reported to the, to the Board of Commissioners?
Basically simultaneously, so that, you know, three months don't go by, and then we see what the, the total is. And it isn't just your department.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to have a situation where an emergency purchase is necessary, and it requires board approval, which could take some time. I'd be concerned about that. But that being said, putting some parameters on it, Mr. Halandal, would that impede your ability to make necessary purchases and expenditures?
We have always, in the past, anything that wasn't going through emergency management for the existing emergency followed all township protocols. Even the emergency purchases, there was one done today for gloves, it, it still has to be approved. I, I do not feel that I have the right to go out and spend the money, and this was a couple hundred dollars for gloves, and it was still an emergency purchase order approved by the Finance Director, and I believe the Township Manager. The only expenditures that we've ever done without previous approval are large fires, feeding people, and stuff like that, that was done on a credit card. So with the exception of stuff going through the Emergency Management Office, which still was approved by people above me, all other regular practices remain in effect.
As long as the, as long as the declaration clarifies, as I say, it was, it was written in a way that was totally open-ended, not just for emergency service, but totally open-ended for the entire township. So again, some kind of written trail, which is more or less simultaneous to those emergency purchases, and, and I would make sure that the wording is such. Nobody wants to stop or delay any of our emergency responders, or for that matter, any of our departments getting what they need in an emergency. That is not what's going on here. Talking about just.
Mr. Bagley, could we do something like that?
Yes, it, it was worded that way, but apparently it's not strong enough, so I'm, I'm changing it to this. "The board waives the requirement for competitive bidding for such services and materials as may be required by the Township Administration for emergency purposes only."
I, I don't even think you need only, just say for emergency purposes.
Okay.
Earl Stam, for the purpose of that particular wording, do you need a definition of emergency?
I would say with, the answer that I give you tonight will be different by tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, that's fair.
This.
This, you know, I've been around a long time and I have never seen anything change, not daily, but hourly. And so I, 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 I can't define with this virus what an emergency is.
I don't want to be in a situation where you have to come back again to amend.
Right, right.
Exactly. No, I understand that. I'm just saying if this is going to be something for the future in all time, whether we're going to do something like this.
I, I have another comment on a, another sort of component of this. Do, do we want to put in our, in our declaration, some of the things that I've seen in some of the other township declarations, talking about following the county and state guidance regarding businesses and, and other, and other guidance coming out from those, from those entities?
We had that discussion today and it was confirmed by Commissioner Arcoosh. We, Cheltenham Township, all departments do not have the ability to enforce what the governor has dictated.
Right.
So.
But can we, couldn't we say we encourage?
Yes, absolutely. As long as the understanding is that the police, emergency management, we, we do not have the ability to close a business.
Right.
We have received just a couple phone calls about it and we have sent them the governor's document and we're not telling people to close. We are claiming if they are standard retail, that is probably, they shouldn't be open.
But. A question regarding that. Philadelphia just took action to close the Philadelphia Mall. You speak of Franklin Mills Mall today pursuant to their declaration and the governor's declaration, where they had decided to remain open and they went up there and forcibly closed them down.
The Health Department, apparently, the county's Health Department is apparently doing that to restaurants who are still seating people. And we have sent some residents who have called up there. Apparently the state did take action through the Liquor Control Board in Abington and shut a bar down. I, you know, that would be a question for Mr. Bagley. I know I don't have the authority to shut a business down. And we have, and the police do not either because it's not a criminal action.
Right, but I, I think, I think my point is that I think all of us have received phone calls, I think Rhonda raised it earlier about people sort of voicing concerns about people who, neighbors who are sort of, you know, taking different positions on their level of compliance with the guidance from the county and the state. And I think as, as a board, it's incumbent upon us to encourage, if not enforce, if we're unable to enforce, to encourage our residents to heed the advice of the county and the state. That's just, that is my opinion.
I, here's some language, if this helps further the discussion. While we were discussing this, the board strongly encourages the public to conform their, its conduct to the advisories and directives of the County of Montgomery and the County Department of Health.
I think that's fine.
Thank you.
On the cross.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Arman. So with those, with those revisions.
Dan, can I interrupt you for one second? Brian Haber had one other recommendation that was not coming from him, but was coming from the tax collector. Brian, do you want to bring that up?
Yes, Napoleon Nelson, I think, shared with a number of the commissioners through email some recommendations that he had for tax extension proposals, one of them affecting real estate and the other affecting Merck and BP tax filing and payments. And perhaps, you know, this should be included in that declaration as well. And staff took a stab working with Napoleon to come up with some verbiage for your consideration. For real estate taxes, consider extending Cheltenham's real estate tax discount payment period for two months from April 3, 2020 to June 3, 2020. And consider extending Cheltenham real estate base tax payment period by two months from June 3, 2020 to August 3, 2020. So that's affecting the real estate tax. For Merck and BP filing and payments, the recommendation is consider extending Cheltenham's Merck and BP tax filing and payment date by 90 days. That would make the extension date for filing and making required payments go from April 15, 2020 to July 15, 2020. So that's on the table for consideration of adding. And Napoleon, Mr. Nelson is here at Curtis and is available to speak on those proposals if you would so like.
Mr. President? Dan?
Yes, go ahead. Commissioner. Sorry.
I know we've had cursory communication about this, but I don't believe, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that we had reached a decision as to how we wanted to handle this yet.
No.
If I'm correct on that, this would be a bit premature to suddenly put in front of us to pass an ordinance when we haven't had that discussion.
I, I think I would join in that only because we're doing this by way of an emergency ordinance that hasn't been advertised and you'd have to justify each thing in it as an emergency.
An emergency.
Right, and I don't know that you can off, that applies to the taxes as much as it does to the rest of the ordinance.
Yeah, well, I appreciate the township manager's efforts on behalf of the tax collector. That is something that should come to us so that we can deal with it appropriately before it's brought up for passage as an adjunct to something that's on the agenda.
Okay, so that, that item is going to be tabled until our next to one.
It's impossible to hear you.
There's an echo in there. Is there a ghost haunting you, Brian?
Mr. Nelson wants to speak.
So I'll use a different microphone. Does this help?
Little bit.
So with the, how about this?
There you go, getting there.
Okay.
If you could use whatever, whatever method Brian was using, that, that's probably the clearest.
Yes, good idea.
All right. I'm, I'm there now. Is this better?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. So several reasons why we're trying to bring this to you tonight. One is, as you may know, the deadline for real estate tax collection is April 3. So in order to have this done at the next legislative meeting, that would be after that deadline, that would significantly impact hundreds and hundreds of residents who we will be seeing or will try and make their way or will be calling the office between now and then, as the last two weeks before the deadline or the last week and a half are notoriously horrific periods for residents to try and make their way into the tax office. It almost poses a health crisis for us in the office as well as for residents trying to get there and pay those taxes. The second piece is that for the discount window, at this point, we're actually realizing the benefit that the bulk of that discount payment has at least been paid already by the banks that have and manage escrow accounts and as well as those that manage most of the corporate properties. So the tax office has already received half of the, you know, full year's tax billings. I think I mentioned this to you all in an email. So this is not providing a significant financial impact on delaying these receipts for the operation of the township. But it is a significant impact on both residents and businesses, both having to realize and try to work to these current deadlines that are in place today, but also not knowing what is happening from a financial standpoint, just as with the health concerns, every day that there isn't an understanding, an explanation, and clarity on financial implications, the uncertainty is a bad thing, not a good thing. That is in part also why the business privilege tax deadlines are reflecting. Those are actually keeping up with what the IRS has already done yesterday to delay those taxes 90 days. Those IRS forms, taxes, and, you know, appropriate processes are mimicked in many ways what we do in the township with our tax office. So doing this is something that we have spoken with other municipalities. We have spoken with the county and the county solicitor and commissioners. We have spoken with the community college. We will not, we might be first to do this in Montgomery County, but we will absolutely not be the last to do this in Montgomery County. And we certainly would not want to be the last to do this as that creates a significant, significant impact. Finally, I would also mention that outside of just the health effects of having those deadlines in place currently, the impact that this virus is going to have and the lack of economic activity in our municipality and in our township is two major issues. One is, that's one of the reasons why many businesses are staying open, because for many of these business owners, most of them small business owners, they don't yet know how they're going to pay their bills. And so they're open, knowing that their volume is less than it usually is, but they're trying to find a way to receive some revenues that they can and not completely shut the doors because they still have taxes that are due. The second piece is many of our businesses, as you can imagine, are small businesses and not only are we losing the economic activity, but they are losing out on their opportunity to continue to survive. This is not something that unfortunately we have the luxury of a significant amount of time to continue to discuss this.
Nelson, I think we get your point on all of this.
Wonderful.
So, so my question, my question surrounds the discount window. And you mentioned the health crisis that, that comes with that. You know, can't people just mail in their taxes rather than bringing them down to, to the office?
So yes, they can mail their taxes. We will also receive, in the mail, we will receive hundreds of pieces of mail each week, certainly, perhaps, I guess realistically between now and then, perhaps upwards of about a thousand pieces of mail. Also, I would note that as part of our, you know, kind of response to how we're handling this virus, our office is extending the amount of time we take before we open mail. And we are also operating on half-staff. So just from a processing perspective, it's going to be something that is untenable for us to handle in the near term. But I would also tell you that most residents are still coming to the old doors. They do not know that our office has moved and they're still having a hard time understanding that that they can mail, right? So we still get hundreds of people who come to the doors during tax deadline periods. So you could tell them that they can mail, but they won't. We have right now, all week, been telling people to go away, to put their taxes in the bins outside the door. And to be honest, and that's kind of odd and unfortunate, the majority, the vast majority of residents who are coming still physically to the tax office right now are seniors who we look at and say, you're the reason why we're trying to protect this community. You know, we would ask and hope that you of all people would, would.
Napoleon, we get it. Can we, can we bring closure to this?
I, I do all this to, to try and make sure that we get a vote on this, or if not, if you were to try and delay, or if you were to request delay, let me know what the timeline is, because every day that goes by without financial certainty is a day that negatively impacts our community in a very real way.
Could I ask a question?
Well, similar to what we just did, why don't we just, why don't we just make the determination? We will follow federal, state, and county guidelines that provide additional time or additional consideration or circumstances that are beyond the control of taxpayers, et cetera, and not get into, you know, and innovate a policy that we really aren't equipped to phrase. I just think what we should do is be consistent with federal, state, and county guidelines on how tax, you know, forms and on tax payments may be accommodated under these circumstances. Let's not try and create.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that on, on the federal level, that, that is what we're doing with business privilege tax. The state and county, they actually don't have guidelines on how to deal with this emergent situation. So the county was working to extend, but in order for the county to do that, and again, the county and community college are listed on our tax bill. So a portion of the funds we take goes to them and they have some, they are a stakeholder in this, but they actually do not dictate when those dates are. So they are, and I've actually got a notice here from the county solicitor, as well as a positive affirmation from Val Arcoosh, they are happy to support local municipalities doing this, but it has to be led by the municipalities. So the county cannot lead because the county does not have any actual legislative say in what the deadline dates are for taxes. That is something that the Board of Commissioners for each township and borough does in December as you, as you all establish the privilege rate.
I have a question. If I may. I, I am, I'm concerned about the legal ramifications of going down this road. I, Mr. Nelson, I appreciate your, your representing what the county has provided, but, but I think it's something that, you know, I think we would need to review. And if we are the, if we are the first, if we would be the first municipality, I'm not suggesting we should be the last, but, but to have somebody else, you know, sort of vet this process before, before we take bold steps that may ultimately run into legal concerns, it seems to me to be somewhat premature. Now, I understand the, the timeliness of the issue, but, but I also don't want to find ourselves in a legal quagmire because we wanted to rush this through. Frankly, I didn't even get your email today, so I don't even know what the parameters are that we're talking about, other than what's just been briefly described. And I tried to take good notes, but I don't know that I got it all, so.
Commissioner Arman, I agree with you. That's part of my concern. We have not looked this over. I don't think we should even consider making a decision for the township on 20 minutes' notice. I do think we can talk to Joe if we need to special, schedule a special session to pass an ordinance. It is within our purview to do that, but I think tonight would be inappropriate.
There seems to be a consensus to deferring this. Our next township meeting is scheduled for April 1. There, it's a committee meeting, but as Commissioner Pransky was saying, there are opportunities for us to have special, special sessions of the board if we needed to expedite something.
Hey, Anne? Didn't you have a question?
I did. Thank you. I was concerned, I mean, it, it's basically just another piece of this and part of what Commissioner Arman was saying. I'm curious about how we would even implement communication of that policy, because if those seniors that Mr. Nelson was talking about are showing up in person, many of them are not online, so they're not going to receive township notification. Some people have already paid, some haven't. What, what were you thinking in terms of how any extensions were going to be communicated specifically in, within our taxpayer community?
Yeah, so I will, two things. One is just regular communication between them and the tax office, residents and, they are called. the tax office, residents and, they are calling, they are emailing. We've fielded three since the office closed at 4:30. Certainly, a press release would go out, as with everything. Something would certainly be on the website, and all of the other avenues that we can to try and communicate, you know, emergency changes and emergency updates.
I guess, I guess my point was that they, they get the bill in the mail. I would think to be equitable and to make certain that it was properly implemented for the entire body, that another mailing would need to go out. I don't know. I mean, to me, that's a little more complicated than just putting out press releases.
Sure, but remember what we're, what we're trying to do is respond to an area of concern that is already being presented to us, and, and do so in a way that says, "You all have more time because you can't come into the office, and we're not seeing you, and you're not sure what's happening."
I think, I think we should bring, let's bring this to closure. We're stretching this meeting. It's been a long evening. We're all dealing with a bunch of things. I don't think we're ready to act on it. So I think the tabling is really what we should be doing. Mr. President?
Okay, so I'm going to go back to our initial adoption. We, I think we have a motion on the table already to adopt the emergency ordinance pursuant to Section 505. As our solicitor has revised it, I don't have the exact wording, but it's been stated a couple of times, that that would adjust our emergency bidding, as well as make clear the need for the communication, the fact that we are having meetings via electronic communication rather than in person. And yet, it's still worth noting that Curtis Hall is open to the public during these meetings if they need to attend in that fashion.
Yes.
Where we're discouraging that, or we're not encouraging that, that's, that's an option. We're encouraging all residents to act safely in these trying circumstances, and the commissioners are trying to do the same, while at the same time, we have an obligation to be open, have our meetings open to the public, and that's what we're trying to do. So a little tangential comments there, but I'm making that motion to adopt the emergency ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Another item possibly of new business?
Another new business item? Yes, Commissioner Rappaport.
If you didn't have anything else, did you have some other stuff first?
I, I did not. I was going on Citizens Forum.
Okay, well.
Earl Stamm, I, I had a few of them, as far as new items. First of all, I want to thank you for keeping the parks open. We use the parks. I see other people use the parks, and I think it's important for morale. So I think it's a good idea to keep them open.
Yeah, thank you.
As far as COVID-19 goes, I sent a note to Dan that you're now allowed to mail your votes in instead of having to go to the polls. And in this uncertainty, I think we should give people, tell people that option. My concern is, in reading about the COVID virus, you can have multiple waves. In other words, everything may look okay by April 28th. If you get a lot of people together, and somebody's got it, and then it hits again. So I think especially older people need to know about the mail-in option.
Thank you. That is worth emphasizing. It is a, no, a no, no reason necessary to have the mail-in vote, meaning you do not have to have, provide an explanation.
Right, that's correct.
It's also highly likely that the April 28th date is going to be pushed back.
I, I don't know. The other comments I wanted to make is, when I take a look at, for the TV broadcasts of meetings, oftentimes, they're not broadcast for some reason. I'm not sure why. So I was going to suggest two things. Number one, when the discs become available.
I'm going to interrupt you. This, this is a Citizens Forum issue. We're trying to close out the commissioner's new business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll hold those comments. We'll come back in a minute.
Fine.
Anne, I believe you had something to say.
I did, but you know what? I'll do it after the Citizens Forum. It's okay. Let him continue. Thank you.
Okay, we're, we're up to Citizens Forum.
So we've closed out new business?
Yeah, go ahead, Earl. Earl, finish.
Okay, I was going to say that when the discs of the meetings become available, they should be at the township for view if someone wants to come in and take a look at them, and possibly even put them on the website along with the minutes, just because minutes aren't always, you know, inclusive of everything. So I think, and you shouldn't necessarily miss something just because you missed the TV program. So I'd like to see more of that. I'm also, to end up with, I really like the idea of Zoom, and I'd like you to consider using it even when we have public meetings again, that if someone can have the option, if they can't come, if they're taking care of their kids or something like that, or they're sick, or even if a board member is away or traveling or something, I think that's a good inclusive way, and I think that's a good way of going into the 21st century.
It is, Earl, it is, it is something we're looking into. We're trying to take baby steps right now. We're going to be looking at Zoom and other similar platforms before we make a final decision.
Okay.
Thanks for your input.
And Earl, just to answer your question regarding where the meetings, the videos are kept at the meetings, we do keep a disc of a CD or a DVD of each of the meetings at all the libraries. That was a policy that the board adopted many years ago.
I did not know that.
Of course, the libraries aren't open right now, but we'll get to that at some point also.
Right.
Roof.
Any other Citizens Forum?
This is the CD Serby.
Rhonda.
Oh, Edie, I'm sorry. I'll be quick. On the, getting, just a little aside from what Earl said, everything on the TV stations is like dated. It's like the library book club. Is there a way to, I know it's complicated, and I understand how it works, but I'm just going to bring it up anyway, quick. Is there a way to take that down for now, and then put like one that everything's canceled, and then maybe for the time being, while we're in the COVID lockdown, that we put some of the banners that have been provided by the governor's office, and Montco up there, like how to wash your hands, how to, you know, how to get ahold of the, of the county, or how to get tested, those sort of things on there, instead of the stuff that's on there that's meaningless?
Excellent suggestion. Can we do that?
We'll, we'll take a look at that, Mar. Marlo is the, right now is the one that puts information up on the web, or on the Channel 42 and 1960. We'll take a look at that tomorrow and see if we can.
Can I, would it help if I sent her some of the suggestions that I had in mind, or do you want her just to go do it?
The, probably the best website and the banner I would suggest putting up, even over the CDC, is the county has done an absolute fantastic.
Fabulous, yes.
And that's the one that, if we're going to put a banner up, that's what we'll put up, and.
Well, there's, there's several from, I hope I'm not interrupting. There's several, there's several on the Montco site, that if you just took three or four of those and put those up, because a lot of our seniors will, will watch television, or, you know, if their kids, like me, our age, could say, "Go watch that," and then it'll teach you, it'll give the information on how to find, how to find out who to call, or, you know, how to go get tested, that sort of thing. Because I think that's, that's another way to hit our seniors that we're not going to hit, because they don't, they won't, they don't go on Facebook, they don't go on social media, and I bet they're not going to the county, the township website either.
Yep, agreed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is the CD Serby. Okay?
Go ahead, Edie.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank Rhonda for these excellent suggestions, and I want to congratulate the Board of Commissioners on a successful video conference, and I hope that we see more. And the last thing I wanted to say is, I want everyone to keep in mind that our parents and our grandparents were asked to go to war for the common good. We're being asked to stay in our homes. We should be doing everything to see that everyone does. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Edie. Any other Citizens Forum?
Well, just from this citizen, if I can.
I, I've got one, too.
I just wanted to take a second to thank Allison personally. She spent a lot of time with me and in the Township building, getting this put together and other options as far as the video conferencing, on a very, very short notice. And I just wanted to commend her efforts because we went a long way in a very short period of time to get this up and running. And to answer everybody else's question, yes, we are going to look to extend this in various ways. We'll have a recording of the meeting. We'll be able to dub that down to a DVD, so nothing will be missed on these. And I just, again, I want to congratulate all of us, and all those who are here, although I've seen the people diminish like it is at a normal township meeting, over the course of the meeting, for participating. And I'm looking forward to us being able to incorporate this as we move forward. But thank you again for your work.
Commissioner Brockington?
Oh, would you mind if I just add one thing to that? Thank you, Brad, for the compliment. I just want to add that unfortunately, we probably will not be able to put tonight's meeting on our cable television station due to the school district being closed. So like I said, we're going to post it on our website as an alternate going forward. So that's maybe why you're not seeing some of the most recent videos on the cable channel.
Thank you, Allison. Commissioner Brockington? Citizen?
No, I didn't have.
Yeah.
This is Brockington. Your microphone is muted.
He didn't have anything. It was, it was me who said, "I've got something else." This is Napoleon Nelson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Didn't recognize your face.
Napoleon Nelson, resident 18 Poe Avenue in Wincote.
Yes.
I would like to inquire as to when you would be able to, or what are the advertising restrictions for a special or emergency meeting of the Board of Commissioners? What sort of advance notice do you need to provide?
A special meeting is 24 hours published notice. An emergency meeting is no notice.
All right, and then I would like to ask if the Board of Commissioners would be willing to send representatives to work with the Township Administration and Tax Collector or Finance Officer tomorrow to dialogue on a tax relief package for the residents of Sheldonham Township, given the urgency of the situation.
We have so many other priorities that we're dealing with. I don't know how we can make that time. I don't think that's advised.
But that's, that's a priority, in my. I don't understand how you would argue that's not a priority to Sheldonham taxpayer.
Napoleon, they're, Napoleon, they are all priorities. We have to decide which way we point the fire hose, where the worst piece of the fire is. It's not going unnoticed, and it's not being ignored. There was one comment from a resident who, well, actually wasn't a comment as much visual, but was expressing her disdain at, at the conversation about the taxes and the situation. And all we're looking for is sufficient information to make a decision. If you have stuff to put forward, bring it to the Township Manager, bring it, send it to our solicitor. We'll, you know, we'll take a look at it, and if it's something we're going to move forward with in whatever form, we'll call that emergency meeting and do it. It's not going to be ignored. It just has to be dealt with appropriately.
That's what I'm asking you to do, is let's do that in the appropriate fashion. Again, solicitors have looked at language. There is more that we can do, but my ask is that you be able to be flexible to an urgent situation.
And you have asked that, and we have responded to it, and we will. We just asked you to send it forward.
Hey, Joe. Joe, have you seen any of this at all?
No.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Does, does the Township Manager have a document that we should be looking at?
I don't think anybody.
There's some, I thought that, I thought some of this documentation was submitted out to the commissioners through some email exchanges that were over the weekend.
It was, some of the commissioners did not receive it.
I, I did not. I know that. Anne?
It, it seems to me that, it seems to me that if there's a document, it should be sent to the Township Manager. The Township Manager should share it with the Township Solicitor and get a legal opinion on it, and then we should have the opportunity to look at it. And if we could do that in expedited fashion, then so be it. Okay, I think we'll leave it.
Leave it at that.
All right, is there any other?
Any other Citizens Forum? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Some.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much to my fellow commissioners for their cooperation.
You can click the button, King.
Thank you.